Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here today. I'm super excited to host this town hall. My name is Lindsay Moore and I'm going to be your moderator this evening and we have with us Vicki Tonkins. She's running for county commissioner, district five in this wonderful special election that's going to happen on November 4th. So to honor your time and to honor everybody's time that's on the call tonight, the first thing we're going to do is we're going to ask Ms. Vicki to give us some background about her. If you don't know anything about Ms. Vicki, she's going to give us a quick intro. And then I'm going to ask Ms. Vicki to give us her favorite coffee and her favorite chocolate. That will allow us to get to know Ms. Vicki a little bit more.
Okay, well, my name is Vicki Tonkins. I'm running for county commissioner, district five. And a little bit about myself, I've been married thirty eight years. I have two children, six grandchildren. And most of my life have been spent in education of some sort. My last educational position was with the University of Phoenix and I was with them for nine years and I taught critical thinking, which I believe is something that I can bring to the table on the county commissioners and really make some good choices.
Fantastic, Vicki. Thank you. But I still haven't heard.
Sorry. My favorite coffee right now is mushroom coffee.
Interesting.
It's good for the tummy. And my favorite chocolate is just about anything with nuts and caramel.
Nuts and caramel.
Covered in chocolate.
That sounds like a cashew bear.
That will work.
Okay, I dig it. I dig it. Okay, Ms. Vicki, so if you have questions that you would like to ask Ms. Vicki directly, please put them in the chat. Okay, so there, there is a live chat section here that I can see and that our other backroom technology people can see. And they will send those questions to me. So the format of this town hall, we would like to have you, the audience, type in your questions and we would love to answer them live. And then we have a few questions that we can go over here with Ms. Vicki about the county commissioners and, and the role of commissioners and what Ms. Vicki would like to do on the board of county commissioners for you. So we'll start with a very first question, Ms. Vicki. So tell us, number one, why are you running?
Well, that, that's a question that I hear all the time and it is a very important question. It's sometimes hard to answer, but the biggest thing for me, I'm tired of what I'm seeing in our government. I feel like that we, the people, are not represented very well. And I say that because I don't know about you, but I do work a job and it's difficult for me to come to a nine AM Tuesday morning meeting. And I just think that is causing a lot of the miscommunication, not understanding what's happening in, in your own county. And I think that needs to change. So I want to see more communication. There's other things that we can discuss later, such as budgets and crime and those types of things. But the number one reason is I want to see the people of El Paso County represented well and I'm not seeing that right now.
Understand. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Vicki. So there, there's a lot of issues that confront us here in El Paso County. There are several things that have come up on the ballot recently that the people of El Paso County have voted against and they have said no. Now recently, you, El Paso County citizens have voted for the Carmen Line annexation. So there was a lot of scuttlebutt about what this was and it actually went back to the commissioner's desk. So after El Paso County voted at eighty-five percent, they said no to the Carmen Line annexation. This annexation went back to the board of county commissioners. They had the final vote on it. And Ms. Vicki, can you give us some more information about that Carmen Line vote and what this means for the people?
Well, the Carmen Line vote, it was eighty-two percent no, which is amazing for anything in El Paso County. So to see eighty-two percent of the citizens saying, you know what, this is not a good thing. So they didn't want the annexation. So that was done, so we thought. Then something else happened. Now, of course, people say, well, that city, so that has nothing to do with the county. Trust me, that's going to affect the county. So what happened after this is a company, you know, they, they came before the county commissioners and they said, hey, we want to build five thousand homes on the other side of Shreve, Flying Horse East, and we want you guys to approve it. Well, the planning commission said, this is not a good idea. They were aware that Carmen Line had died hard. And here we are with something else in the county. Well, when you look at Carmen Line, at least it was brought before the people because a great group of patriots came together and said, enough, we do not want our lands taken over by all these homes and, and, and they hadn't gotten information like they should have. So the county commissioners took it upon themselves to say, oh, well, this is on the other side of Shreve. So why don't we go ahead and allow it? So we're going to have five thousand plus homes, not to mention businesses and different things like that, right there at Shreve. Now, it has come forward that the generals out there have said this is going to be an issue. It's going to be national security issue. We are, we have five bases in our county. Guys, this is not a good thing. It is not. And I know one of the commissioners, my opponent, has said, well, I'm all about the rights of people's private property. So am I. But when it's going to be a national security problem, we have to reassess that. I think this was a poor decision, four to one, for people to not even know. Because as we had been out campaigning, many of the people said, what? We didn't know they did that. So they backdoored us. And basically what's going to happen, now they're going to annex over with the Flying Horse people. And guess what's going to happen next? Well, wait, wait, wait. You didn't let the Carmen Line go through, so I should have a right for my Carmen Line. Watch out, people. It's coming.
Thank you, Ms. Vicki. I appreciate the information on that. So the thing I'm hearing Ms. Tonkins say a lot is that we have an, an issue with communication, that the people of El Paso County are not being represented well. In fact, the vote and the authority of the people has been usurped by those who think that their decision-making process is better than the people's. And that's concerning. That's highly concerning. So on to our next question, Ms. Vicki. I know that there are a lot of issues that concern the people of El Paso County. I know that, that one of the top issues is overbuilding. I don't know if many of you in El Paso County have seen lately a lot of the apartment complexes going up. I know that small businesses thrive in El Paso County and when we grow, small businesses grow. But we also need to do this in a way that supports our resources. And so tell us a little bit more, Ms. Vicki, about your thoughts on the building in El Paso County.
Well, I'm concerned, I think, just like everyone else. It's like if there's a patch of land, let's put something on it. I don't think that's very wise. And, and you know, most of us already know we have water issues. Whether we want to admit it or not, we are a landlocked area. So with all the building that's happening, I find myself not hearing the county commissioners address the water. That's just one thing, the water issue. So I went to the water board meeting and they were talking about the Denver Aquifer that helps El Paso County. But there was something missing in the conversation. They talked about how we will never run out of water in the Denver Aquifer, even though we have a three hundred year tap on that, right? That we'll have water in El Paso County for three hundred years. Well, have y'all noticed that in probably the last ten years that we've had water restrictions? Why? If we have so much water, why is there water restrictions? So we, we don't have enough water for the citizens now, but we want to build all these homes and all these areas. What's going to happen with the water? So in this board, this water board meeting of the county commissioners, I'm sitting there, I'm like, ask the question. Ask the question. Ask the question. Because the question that I wanted them to ask the, the engineer was this. So how is our three hundred year water supply going to be affected by the building, the quickness of the building that we are doing in El Paso County right now? Five county commissioners, not one, not one asked that question. And that should be the major question to be asked of the water board.
I agree. I agree. There are many questions that need to be asked here and I believe that the citizens need to be communicated with on a lot of these issues. So Ms. Vicki, one of the big main points of your platform while you're running for commissioner, district five is common sense solutions. So your goal is to bring some very simple, common sense solutions to the board of county commissioners. Now, the first thing I'd like you to tell us is what is a county commissioner and what do they do?
Well, I'm going to read some information for you because one of the things I did notice is a lot of people have no idea what the county commissioners do, why they're there, what do we need them for, you know? So basically, the power of the county commissioner is defined by the state constitution and statutes. So it's a arm of the state. That's, that's put it simply. But it's an elected official who is responsible for administrating county government, thus El Paso County commissioners. They make decisions to improve the community. You seen that lately? Oh, I'm just asking. Okay. Overseeing various county departments. So they oversee the sheriff's department, the election department, all that you see with your tags and all that sort of thing, those types of budgets. They manage the county government budgets. Oh, and by the way, you can download the most recent county budget from the commissioner's website. It's only, I think it's about a hundred and twenty pages. I could be wrong about that, but I think it's about a hundred and twenty pages. That tells you a lot. They appoint officials like for different boards, like for the health board and stuff like that.
Can I, can I interrupt you right there?
Sure.
I apologize for interrupting.
No problem.
So this is a very important piece of information that the board of county commissioners do. So the county health board was the one that shut down El Paso County in twenty twenty and told us all to go home and that our small businesses were not important, but the alcohol stores and the pot shops were. So our kids were less important, but, and our small businesses were less important. And we had to go home.
And mask up.
And mask up. So I, I just want our listeners to know that this is the power of the county commissioner.
That's right.
Right here. This is why our local level authority is so very important. Because when we were pushing back at school board in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one against mask mandates on our children, there was a lot of obfuscation that said, no, we can't do anything. And the county commissioners actually did the same thing. They said, no, we don't have any control over this, when in fact, they actually do.
Exactly.
So please continue, Mrs. Tonkins. I am sorry for interrupting you.
No, no, no. That's a good point. Because of that, I had come out maybe a little too strong saying that we should not be masking people. It's not helping. I was doing a lot of research on the health benefits of not masking and how it is important to be outside in the sun and how it's important to be outside in general. I was laughed at by the county commissioners. Yes, I was. I was laughed at by them. A year later, they're talking and saying what I was saying. So what, what happened? So I was laughed at about it and I stood my ground and I said, no, this is how it should be. And then they came around a year later. Well, a lot of people were hurt in that year because they did not take a stand. So I'll say that. And one last thing is they are to ensure that the laws and the statutes that are in our state are followed. So it sounds like a lot, but it's like an everyday type of, of working. The, the board members of the county commissioners, they all sit on certain boards throughout the city and they sit on the health board.
They do sit on the health board. It's so very important. Local authority is so very important. And so this is why elections, local elections are so very important. Because when you have individuals who are working very hard to make sure that the voice of the people is honored, then we have more freedom in our county to do the things that we need to do.
That's right.
And so that's why these elections are so very important and we so appreciate you, Ms. Tonkins, for being here. So thank you for telling us about the board of county commissioners. Next up, we have a really big issue here in El Paso County. As most counties around the nation are experiencing, we are having a surge in crime. So crime in El Paso County has gone through the roof. We, I don't know if you have noticed, have had a lot more break-ins lately. We've had a, a lot more vehicles being stolen lately. So Ms. Tonkins, please give us a common sense solution that you're bringing to the table about the crime in El Paso County.
Well, I have a couple of simple things that I think could fix a lot of our issues pretty quickly. One is we're going to have to put the police and the sheriff's department in places where they're needed. Not just them just driving around. And I know that sounds simple, but it's not. If you have a high crime area, we need police and sheriffs there, monitoring. But here's the solution that I think can curtail a great deal. Neighborhood watch. And I know people have laughed about that. I do have a video out about my crime plan. Neighborhood watch will save us so very much in this county. I'm just going to give you example of my neighborhood watch. Our entire neighborhood knows each other. We have emails. We have their phone numbers. We have a chat group. If say, if someone sees something in our neighborhood that's like, hmm, that's not right, immediately we're getting an email, a phone call or a text message saying, hey, I saw this in the back, in the back green belt. Can you look at that? Something's going on. And that actually did happen where we had about three or four homeless people walking in our green belt. So all of us just went out on our decks and was looking at them. We just looked at them. I mean, we didn't say anything to them because we didn't know if they were armed or whatever. So we just looked at them and watched them and they saw us all out on our decks watching them. And guess what they did? They turned around and they left our neighborhood. Pretty simple. Another simple thing that we do in our neighborhood, everybody keeps their porch light on. You know, when you shine the light on darkness, it goes away. Simple.
Thank you, Ms. Tonkins. So what I believe I'm hearing Ms. Tonkins say is that when community comes together and they are empowered to do the thing that they need to do, which is to take care of themselves, we can help reduce the crime rate here in El Paso County.
It's called self-governance. It works.
The other thing I'm hearing you saying is that the El Paso County Sheriff's Department, their budget is controlled by the El Paso County Commissioners. And so Ms. Tonkins here is in support of the El Paso County Sheriff's Office.
Absolutely. We need them.
And my understanding based on your common sense solution is that you'd like to empower the sheriffs to do everything that they can to support the citizens and that you will do everything you can to empower them as well.
Yes.
Am I correct in saying that?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I believe you mentioned the budget and the county commissioners, they hold the budget for the El Paso County Sheriff's Office. And I know that budgets are tight. I know that money is tight, but I do know that sometimes it's a good idea to look through the budget and see if there's a little bit more that we could allocate to our friends and back the blue.
Yes, we must back the blue. Listen, I encourage you to go download that budget. You don't have to print the hundred and twenty pages, but download that budget and look through it. Because with everything being so tight on the American citizen, we have to make sure that we're staying within that budget. Because for me, I want to look at it and say, okay, so this was increased twenty percent from last year. Is there a reason? I want to know why. I don't want to just say, oh yeah, go with that twenty percent and not know why it's there. It could be legit. It could, it could not, you know, but we need to know that. Just like you at home, you have a budget. You have your plan. You know how much money's coming in and how much is going out. What I'm concerned about is we're, we're putting, okay, let me give you an example. And this is something that caught my attention. It kind of ticked me off just a little bit. When I got my tags from a vehicle and I saw all those fees, not taxes, fees, and there were like three fees on there that were the identical item. And I'm like, what, wait, wait. Why is there three different things and they say the same thing? Can that not be one, one and lower? Those are the types of things that concern me and they should concern you because that's your money. Why are our taxes going up and they're calling them fees? It's a way to get around Tabor. Tabor is one of the best things to ever happen to Colorado. But we have people who are ignoring Tabor, taxpayer bill of rights, and it's costing us more money. So look at that budget. It's important.
Thank you, Ms. Tonkins. So in that same vein, we're talking about the El Paso County Sheriff's Office. This is one of the, what I would call wheels that makes the county bus go round and round. One of the parts of the El Paso County Sheriff's Office or one of the emergency things that we have available to us, not just the sheriffs, but also is an emergency preparedness plan. So El Paso County had in twenty twenty-two, an emergency preparedness plan for the county. Now, I haven't looked to see if it's been updated, but Ms. Tonkins had mentioned in one of her platform stances that rapid text alerts out to the county were something that she would like to empower the county to do, to the citizens, to help notify us when issues arise, when there's something we need to be aware of, if there's an emergency situation. Now, I know I lived in Colorado Springs at the time that we had the big fire. I called it Fire on Mountain.
Yep.
And I will say that not everybody had a reverse nine one one call on their cell phone because we are now mostly cellphone-based. I know that there are some of us who have those beautiful old school landlines, but not everyone does anymore. So tell us a little bit more about this rapid text alerts that you've been talking about, Ms. Tonkins.
Well, I know there are systems all over the country that use this. I, we are, we're one of the largest counties in the nation. We are fourth largest county in the nation. I'm talking United States of America. For us to be that large, if we do not have that in place and like Lindsay, I haven't checked to see if all that's in place yet. I know it was being worked on, but I haven't gotten any notice from the, the board of county commissioners saying that's in place. That has got to be put in place. I don't know of anybody, an adult, that does not have a cell phone of some sort. I know some people may have a flip phone, but most people have the updated phones and they can get these messages. So can the flip phones. They can get these text messages to say, hey, there's an issue. This is what you need to do. Let's do that. I think that's going to save us a lot of lives and a whole lot of time if we put that in place.
Thank you, Ms. Tonkins. I agree. Emergency preparedness, especially here in our county is going to be a big deal.
Yes.
You know, there are a lot of counties, there's a lot of states all over the nation that are, that are frankly, having issues with floods or fires.
Yes.
Or natural disasters. And so I do believe that we need to be more alert and aware of those things here in El Paso County. Okay, so in that vein, Ms. Tonkins, I'd like to talk about another everyday problem that is confronting Americans. It's in the news every single day. So we're trying to bring to you tonight some kitchen table issues, issues that every voter is concerned about. You know, one of the big ones, like we talked about was Carmen Line. Another one was the overbuilding in El Paso County. The next one was emergency preparedness and then we had crime. So one of the other issues that is confronting almost every single American is election integrity. I should, I shouldn't say almost every American. I should say every single American because if we don't have election security, then we don't have a country. And so Ms. Tonkins, can you tell us, what are your thoughts about election integrity? What can a county commissioner do to ensure that we have more safe and secure elections?
Well, let me start out by saying this. It, I, it would be awesome to me if we had one day paper ballots, elections. That would take care of a lot of the issues, I think. Because so many people have said to me, what are we going to do about those machines? Well, that's one of the things in the budget for the clerk and recorder's office. Can the, can the county commissioners do anything about that? I think so. I know that it would be much cheaper to have a one day election. I mean, it's a novel idea, but we did it for many, many years where you went to your polling place. You went into your little booth and you marked your ballot and you turned it in. But before all that, you had to stop at the little poll table and you had to sign your signature by showing your ID. Can we bring that back, please? I would love to see that happen all the time. I personally vote in person, so they have to see my ID when I go in and they print me a ballot. So that's what I do. They don't care for that very much, but I do it and I vote on election day. Yes, we have got to do something. I know President Trump is working on no mail-in ballots. He's working on that feveriously and some people have said to me, well, he doesn't have the authority to do that. Okay, he is the president of the United States of America and if it passes, then we need to make our adjustments. So I'm very concerned and I have from twenty twenty, I have been concerned about this. And I have made it very clear that I'm concerned about this. So we've got to do something, board of county commissioners.
Yes, I do believe that this issue needs to be addressed and I do believe there are some counties in the state of Colorado who've paved the way for a, a little bit more secure election. And we can always review the system and we can always find a way to do better. And a lady never reveals her age, but I will say there was a day where I did vote in person and I did not receive a mail-in ballot and I went to my local polling place. I may have been a little bit younger perhaps. But it did happen and we did get results on election night. So thank you, Ms. Tonkins. And we do have a question. So we're going to go question to a viewer. And we have, it looks like Travis says, I believe this is in response to the rapid text alerts and he asks, is this the same as the peak alerts? And so I would say to Travis, peak alerts, you do have to opt into, but I do believe that peak alerts is underutilized, meaning that it, it's not, it's a platform we can use and we can do better. Ms. Tonkins, what do you think?
Well, I, I agree with you, Lindsay. I think that we can do better. We can always do better, right? And if the peak alert is available, how do we get everybody to join it? What, what is the solution to that? We have to be able to communicate to the people in the county and say, hey, we have this available. Please put in your number so that if anything happens within our county, you will be alerted.
Absolutely. I wholeheartedly agree. We are in the age of, of communication and we have to be able to communicate with our constituents. And I know from a, a personal citizen, citizen, I can't say it tonight, citizenry perspective, I would like to know a lot more about what my county commissioners are doing for me as a citizen of this county. Oftentimes there is no communication.
None.
It's, you know, they have their meetings up on Facebook, but let's be honest, how many of us are constantly checking Facebook for the meetings? I would love to see some citizen journalists out there in front of the board of county commissioners telling us what they're voting on today. Or in fact, Ms. Tonkins, would you, I'm putting you on the spot, okay? So Ms. Tonkins, if you win this seat of county commissioner for district five, would you be willing to do a little bit of citizen journalism yourself? Would you be willing to take it to the streets as it were?
That's my plan.
I would love to see more of our county commissioners come forward with the actual issues that the people want to hear about, those kitchen table issues. You know, when we, we are told on a daily basis that we cannot use our water and yet we're seeing all of these things pop up. we're seeing all of these things pop up, we're going, well, what's going on here?
That would be a really good thing. One of the, the things that's new as far as our utilities, is this not using your util- utilities between five and nine? Well, that's when most families are home from the day.
That's correct.
So you're going to charge us more doing five to nine when everybody's home. That's not right. It's not right. And that's my understanding that there's a petition going around about that. I just don't understand why elected officials are always taxing the people with their shortcomings.
Um, I agree. This goes back to the checkbook. Um, can you balance your own checkbook before you go to the people and ask for some more money?
That's it.
So you know, when my husband and I are looking at the budget and we're going, hey, you know, there's, there's a few more days in this month and there is money, then we're going to have to go back to that checkbook and find out what it is that we need to change. And I feel that it is the job of the county commissioner who oversees the budget of the county to check that checkbook before we go ask the people for some more funding.
And if they do, if we do ask you for more funding, we better be detailed about it and, and give you specifically why.
Absolutely. I totally agree. So um, I have another question from Travis here. And he says, does the commission have any power over those utility companies?
Unfortunately, if it's not a county uh, utilities, and I can't remember what some of them, the utilities that are out like in Cherokee is one of them. Um, mostly those, most of our district. And of course, as a county commissioner, you're, you're going to be working with all of the districts. But CCD five in particular is mostly the city. So we're going to be hit hard with those five to nine fees if you can't adjust that. That's pretty normal for me. So, but everybody's not like that. Everybody can't do that. When you have to wash clothes or you need something for the next day. Or you're going to go, oh, it's, is it between five and nine? Oh, well, I gotta pay more. You should never have to think like that. Never.
Right. Um, so my thought process to Travis, Travis and Ms. Vicky is that the Board of County Commissioners, we would like to see them work in conjunction with the City of Colorado Springs Council members. Because the council members are actually part of the Board of Utilities, um, and they have
They are the board.
Right. They have control over that. So if there was more communication and more collaboration together with the city council, I believe that more could be accomplished. But the idea of punishing citizens for using electricity between um, high output hours is wrong. That's actually um, a piece of the socialist Marxist, Marxist playbook.
Thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome. Um, so it, it actually is anti-freedom and it's anti-liberty. We are actually punishing citizens um, for living their lives and it's wrong. And so it, this is why it's so important. This is why local elections are so important because you want to have your local level officials be individuals who believe in that personal freedom, the right of you and your person to maintain your private property the way you deem fit. And that's why Ms. Vicky Tonkins, I believe, is here this evening. I'm asking for your vote because we'd like to change that in El Paso County.
It, it has to be done. I, I'm concerned that first of all, our have our county commissioners even read the constitution to know what their duties are? Um, our freedoms are given to us by God. And when we have elected officials that trample on those freedoms, something must be done. Um, I, I don't understand it. I don't understand the whole rationale of always going to the citizens to, to beef up a budget. Something has to be done within those organizations to say, no, we're going to have to, you know, tighten the belt a little bit. Because the people are taxed overly.
I agree. So um, to all of you listening tonight, I'd like to ask you, what are the top three kitchen table issues that matter to you? Vicky is here for you. She wants to talk directly to you and answer your questions. Um, I love that we have a platform of communication to be able to do this where we can reach directly to the citizens, to the voters. You guys are the most important people that we can talk to because we are your representatives. Vicky is your potential representative on that board and we want to make sure that she is effective and that she gets in there and does all the things that we um, would like to see in El Paso County. We'd like to see a little bit more freedom, a little more liberty, a little less crime. Am I right?
Less crime, please.
Little less crime.
We can work on that together.
More election security. Um, I love that we could um, do that together. So um, Vicky, tell us uh, one more thing, or shall we say, uh, another kitchen table issue? One of the top three issues that you've heard from the voters. So I know that you've been knocking a lot of doors. You've been reaching out to voters. You've been talking to them one-on-one the last couple of weeks. So tell me what, what's one of the issues that you've heard them speak about often?
Probably crime is, is probably the number one because people want to be safe. They want to be secure in their homes. Uh, then secondly, the economy. For some people, it's flipped, but those are the two main things. Um, some people say, well, I haven't thought about it, which is fine, but the main thing I hear is the economy and crime. What are we going to do about that? Because a lot of people are living paycheck to paycheck. And if one of those paychecks, I mean, with this government lockdown, if one of those paychecks aren't coming in, that's huge. It's huge. It's going to, it's going to affect everything about their lives. Can I put gas in the car? Can I, can I um, go to the grocery store because I don't have gas in the car? You know, how am I going to buy groceries? What groceries can I not buy this month or this week? To make sure that we have something to eat, but maybe not exactly everything that we want. Why should we have to do that? I mean, people are working two and three jobs and it's because the tax burden is so heavy. And now they're talking about, we're not going to get any more um, Tabor refunds. That used to help people. Something has to give and it shouldn't be the, the, the citizens.
I agree. I, I don't think that the, coming back to the citizens for more money is the answer right now. We've got to have to, I believe that the answer that I'm hearing from you is that we have to reprioritize. Reprioritize things in our budget. Um, which may, I'm going to bring up the point because there's oftentimes, I hear this a lot from those who are running for office. We're going to fix the roads.
Oh, Lord. I'm sorry if I rolled my eyes.
So those of you listening tonight, I really, really want you to comment. Please tell me, number one, how are your roads? Number two, um, what do your potholes look like? And number three, um, how are your curbs? Do they look good? Um, we would like to make you the priority. So let us know in the chat. Um, I believe it looks like, I, I can't read it. Brennan says annexation without representation is a huge issue for the county. It should be addressed with reform at the state level. I agree wholeheartedly. Um, we have a lot of uh, shall we say, annexation without representation and different avenues. Um, I believe we have a state house that's kind of taken the authority of the people and run away with it. And um, we need county commissioners who are able and willing to stand up against that kind of overreach. So there was a mandate put out by the legislature and Governor Polis um, in regards to housing. And Ms. Tonkins, how would you address that particular issue at the county level?
I mean, housing is a tough issue, especially affordable housing. I mean, when you have one-bedroom apartments that are going for two thousand dollars a month, I mean, Lord, that's most, that's more than most people's mortgage. And what are they getting for that? They're not getting any returns. They're just given a, a landlord money. Which, that's a small business. Great. If you can get that, awesome. But people need to be secure that their rent's not going to go up every year. Why does it have to go up every year? What has changed? That has always been a question. What has changed about this apartment that would require it to go up again every year? Um, you know, there's a lot, I'm not going to say a lot because there is not a lot compared to other counties that are as large as El Paso. There is um, homelessness. It's going to have to be addressed. We're addressing it a little bit. But I don't think building all these apartments that people can't afford is the solution. Um, I would like to hear what people think the solution is. I know one person told me to get patches of land and let people build, you know, a certain square footage on that land. Well, that will work for some, but everybody can't afford the down payment to, to own a home. We're not even addressing that at all. The interest rates, we should be up in arms if the interest rate is so high. Um, there's so many issues when it comes to affordable housing. And I don't see that El Paso County has come up with a good viable solution for the majority of the people. With that said, we need to sit down and we need to discuss what would be a viable solution. I'm concerned about our vets that are on the streets. I'm very concerned about that. And I'm sorry, but illegals should not be getting monies when our vets need it so much more.
I agree wholeheartedly. Um, and I'm going to make a public service announcement and say, um, our military, first responders and everybody who's not getting paid right now, uh, we support you wholeheartedly. And um, any resource that um, we can, I, I can't offer resources, but I know uh, many churches around the county have food pantries. You guys, we're a military, I, I, we're a military family too that is not getting paid. So uh, find a church, go to the food pantry and get anything that you need for your, your family. I know the Colorado National Guard has put out um, some meal assistance program. I think it's mealsformill.org. So if you're not on there, go check it out. Um, head down to your Karen share. You guys, um, taking care of the military in this county is a really, 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 really big deal. We have five bases. And um, to think that our heroes in uniform are the ones that are not eating right now and they're not getting paid is, um, it's a travesty. Uh, it's, it's a travesty of misuse of government um, appropriations. So you guys know that military, we support you, uh, first responders, police. You guys are all Border Patrol, you're essential and we love you and we thank you for your service and your sacrifice during this time. I believe Ms. Tonkins is of the same mind.
Yes, uh, I had four brothers that served in the military, three of them retired after twenty-plus years. One did his four and he said, that's enough. But our military is so important, which is my concern about Carmen Line and the, and the um, Flying Horse East. Uh, being there on Shreve, that, that really concerns me about our national se- security. And I, I guess I'm a little bent toward the military because of my family being so, you know, involved in military. And my uncle was a police officer, so I have a high respect for these people. And I just, it just really breaks my heart to see money going to people who are not citizens of our county and not going to our veterans and our military people.
I agree. I agree. Um, and we have a lot of vets here in the county. And we need to take care of them and we need to do a better job. I agree. Um, okay, so what is another kitchen table? You guys tell me in the chat, what's a kitchen table issue that uh, is very concerning in the county for you, something that you would love to see Ms. Tonkins address? If you elect her, what do you want her to do? How can she represent you? Because that is what this local level governance is. It's how can we represent you?
That's right.
Um, so while we wait for those to comment in the chat, Ms. Tonkins, will you give us another piece of your platform that you're going to take to the county commission um, and serve the people with?
For me, some things are just a no-brainer, I guess you could say. Just thinking, I, I'm going to give you an example, when this whole thing happened with the bag tax. The ten cent bag tax.
Plastic bags.
So that comes down and everybody's going, I have to pay ten cents. The bags got thinner. They were busting all over the place. Then you had to go buy a real bag for a dollar and bring that with you. Half the time I forgot mine in the car sitting right there. Right? So fast forward a year or so, and the guy who brought this before the state, he goes, well, we didn't really think that far. That's a problem. We have elected officials who we didn't think that far. We've got to have more practical thinking and saying, okay, what is this going to look like a year from now? Well, when some of these municipalities could not afford what they wanted them to do in these programs, they were just letting the money sit there because they couldn't afford the programs. And so it's that type of thing where I believe I can bring that co- and people don't like common sense, but you know, you just have to have some. And if you're looking at, you know, I used to teach my students, when you're writing a paper, I have given you details on how to write that paper. Do not use Wikipedia as your source because it's not a reliable source. We have to look at reliable sources when we're making these decisions about anything as the county commissioner. Because we have to look at it as, this is not my money. This is the people's money and we need to spend it wisely.
I think the word that you're looking for there is called stewardship.
Stewardship, that's a good word. Absolutely.
How can we steward these funds for you? So, um, that being said, I think we have another comment in the chat and it looks like Ms. Regina is there. And she says, the government shouldn't have a say in what is affordable. Boy, wouldn't I agree there. That, that's a family conversation. Affordable housing is through the roof because of state regulation. So um, Representative Kendegraff, uh, and he's House District Twenty-two. He will, he will kindly refer to the state legislation as the Gold Dome cesspool. Um, and he will often refer to the government and he will say, there is no problem. The government hasn't created that they can solve with another solution that they've created. So, um, there is no affordable housing that the government has created. And I, I do believe that um, you know, Governor Polis's regulation that he's trying to force down onto the counties, again, is not an affordable solution. Like Ms. Tonkins has said, like Ms. Eslick online has said. Um, so we have another question from Ms. Eslick. It says, can the county commission do anything about the state overregulation? Um, so, Ms. Tonkins?
Well, remember, county commissioners are like an extension of the state. So the state puts in these different regulations and stuff and say, oh, you have to do this. My thing is, if you're an extension of the government, you should be able to go back and say to Governor Polis or whomever you have to talk to and say, that won't work here. That will not work in El Paso County. Give me another solution. This is what we think. We need to come up with our own solutions. This is what we think should happen regarding that. That's part of governance.
I agree. That's um, also a point that was brought up over here by, is that Brenna? Brenna, it says, we should consider home rule for the county. I agree Brenna. This is something that I believe Douglas County tried to vote on recently. Uh, home rule so that they could protect themselves from the overreach of the government. And she stated here that she believes Pitkin and Weld are the two that um, have home rule cour- currently. Now, I wholeheartedly agree that if we have home rule, we like to rule ourselves, please.
Well, we have that in the city.
We do have that in the city of Colorado Springs.
But it does not extend to the county.
No. So the county commissioners are going to have to bring that up and we need strong county commissioners who are bold. And she's writing a note Brenna. She's going to take this to the county commissioner for you. All the commissioners. So we need bold county commissioners who are willing to do the job that people has asked that, that have asked them to do. Um, and I believe home rule is a great solution.
Great solution. Thank you for that.
Yes, absolutely. So um, are there any more kitchen table common sense solutions that you guys, you the listeners care about? This is all about you. So stewardship, local governance is all about serving the people. Like Ms. Vicky says, like she has on her shirt and is on her platform, she's about serving we the people. That's you and that's me. So if there's another kitchen table issue that you'd like to hear Ms. Tonkins talk about this evening, please put it in the chat. We would absolutely love to address um, any questions that you have. And while we do that, while we wait for another question, Ms. Tonkins, um, back to the knocking of doors. I know it's getting cold and it's getting dark fast, but I know that you have been working hard. So can you tell us, um, a constituent that you have met recently? Um, any of the issues that we have not talked about that they may be brought forward to you in the last two weeks?
Well, just about everything that uh, they have brought up is what we have talked about. A lot of people did, was not, they were not aware of the Car- Carmen Line back door through the Flying Horse East. They were not aware of that. And they were not happy because they had voted They were not aware of that and they were not happy because they had voted no.
Yes.
For Carmen Line and they're like.
Eighty-two percent voted no.
That four out of five of our county commissioners. Voted to start another annex type of situation by Shreve? And we're like, yes. And, and I tell them, we had one county commissioner that said, absolutely not. And that's County Commissioner District Three. So I'm telling you now that County Commissioner District Five said, yes, that's a good idea. And I'm saying, no, that's a bad idea.
Thank you, Ms. Tonkins, for standing up for the people. Uh, I wish we had a lot more legislators and local level governance. Individuals who would do that, that they would stand up for the people. Um, so, thank you. I'm still waiting for another question in the chat. I really appreciate everybody who, um, is putting their questions in there.
Well, one of the things I could, I would like to talk about too, uh, while people are formulating their questions. Is, um, gas prices are going down.
Yeah.
If you've noticed, gas prices are going down. I think egg prices went down, didn't they?
Okay, so.
Prices are a little better.
I get my eggs from a local farmer, okay?
There you go.
So I work really hard to shop Colorado farms.
Yes.
And I make sure I get my beef local and I get my eggs local.
Yep.
Um, and I'm just gonna say this, I love my chicken lady and I love my organic eggs. So I don't actually go to the store for my eggs, but I do believe that I have seen that. We don't have eight-dollar eggs anymore.
That was, that was horrible.
I think, are we at three-dollar eggs? Somebody tell me in the chat, are we at three-dollar eggs? Cause they used to be 99 cents.
Right? 99 cent eggs, 99 cent bread. But the prices are going down. So that is something that I'm really excited about. That's gonna help with these budgets a little bit. So. I just wanted to mention that.
Absolutely. That's gonna help families with budgets.
Absolutely.
So something else that you brought up a while back, Ms. Tonkins, was the fees. That those in the county experience when they go register their vehicle. So, um, this was an issue for myself when registering my, um, SUV in the last two years. But I also had somebody from another state tell me that they registered their car in another state. And it actually cost them pennies on the dollar in comparison to what Colorado charged. Now, on the average, we're looking at about a, a thousand-dollar bill to register any kind of a vehicle. Through the DMV here in the state of Colorado and, or should we say in El Paso County?
So, County Service.
Right. The county commissioners, they oversee and uphold the budget for the county clerk and recorder. So that directly affects what the county clerk and recorder can and cannot do. Is there anything that you know of or any way you can address those fees that keep showing up? On our registration? How can we get those rolled back?
Well, that's something I wanna work on. You elect me, I will work on that because there should not be a list of 10 fees.
No.
On your statement for your tags. That blows my mind. I'm just gonna be honest with you. I don't get it. Because of tabor. The government has to come to we the people before they can raise taxes, right? Well, if you call it a fee, they don't have to come to us. I'm sorry, but those fees are a tax.
They are.
And that has got to stop because it's sidestepping tabor. And I don't understand why there's so many fees. Let's, let's call it what it is. It's a tax.
I agree. I agree wholeheartedly. Okay, so, uh, one more thing before we close it up for the evening. I don't see any other questions in the chat. So if you guys wanna talk about anything else, uh, please type it in the chat. And we wanna honor your time because we've got about four minutes before we're at the top of the hour and we wanna make sure that. Um, everybody here gets their questions in before we close out. Um, so Ms. Vicky, can you give us a closing statement? On why everybody who's listening should vote for you, for commissioner?
Yes, um, the main thing is I think I bring a different perspective. I've, I've lived life. I've raised children. Um, I'm raising my, not raising, but I'm, I'm with my grandchildren and trying to put things in them, you know, as they grow up. I, I, I bring a, a worldview. A Christian world, worldview actually. Because everything I look at in my personal life, everything I look at in the roles that I've had. As a leader of the El Paso County GOP, I've always tried to look at that in, in, in a, in a perspective of. How is this going to affect the people? That is just always how I, I think because in my understanding. Elected officials, people who get our vote, they are supposed to represent we the people. If they're not doing that, then they need to be voted out. It's going to require that we pay attention to what is happening in our county. And that's another thing I want to bring to the table. I see myself making these little videos and sending them out to the citizen street. Just to let them know what is happening. So you don't have to go, well, I didn't know that happened. Why did they do that? They didn't say anything to us about it. I hate feeling like that, that we just get blindsided by all these things. So that's one of the things I, I truly believe in my heart that I can bring to the Board of County Commissioners. That can make things better for the citizens. And, uh, and another thing is, yes, I'm on your ballot. If I'm not on your ballot, you're not in my district. But if I'm on your ballot, vote for Vicky Tonkins because I really will work for you.
Thank you, Ms. Tonkins. We're honored to have you this evening.
Thank you.
Um, there was one more comment by Ms. Regina and she says, because our car registration and taxes and fees are supposed to maintain the roads, correct?
Yes.
Would, would, I seem to remember several things that are supposed to maintain our roads. We have. PPRTA, we had a ballot measure and.
C2.
Yes, and.
They extended.
Yes.
And I, I tell you, with the money that they're getting and they'll, they'll swear up and down that it's not enough. There should not be a pothole in El Paso County or the city of Colorado Springs. Because there's so many avenues where this money is go, is coming in. And I'm trying to figure out, why did I hit that big pothole the other day when I thought my whole bottom was gonna fall out of my car? And I gotta tell you, in the past, I've had to pay $1,500 for a repair because I hit a pothole.
Oh dear.
And I gotta tell you, there's a lot of people I've talked to who said, I did the same thing. I hit that pothole, didn't see it and here I am out of the thousand dollars.
I think this leads us to another thing for citizen journalism. Uh, this sounds crazy, but.
Nope.
We need a pothole reporting line?
A pothole reporting line. You know, that's, that's really a good idea. I'm gonna write that down too.
Okay.
Um, because. We need to start getting engaged and just blow up some emails and say, hey, we got a pothole over here. Can you fix it?
Yes, we do. Well, I thank you, Ms. Tonkins, for your time this evening. Thank you for spending an hour with us. Um, and I will say, please, go vote.
Please.
Please go vote.
And vote for Vicky.
Vote in person, okay? It doesn't matter if you got a mail-in ballot, take it with you and have them shred it. Make them print you a new one in person. You can go to. All the polling places in El Paso County are listed on the Clerk and Recorder's website.
Yep.
You can go there, you can vote in person. They are waiting for you. Your taxpayer dollars are paying for the individuals who are waiting for you to walk in that door and vote. So please go vote. Do not sit on the sidelines. When Republicans sit on the sidelines, this is when those people who do not honor our vote. Get elected.
Yes.
So this is where the rubber meets the road. Go in, spend, spend the 15 or 20 minutes. There's actually oftentimes no lines.
Yes.
And go vote, okay? And if they print you a ballot in person, that means you were recorded as voting in person and not voted. Um, a mail-in ballot. So even if you fill out your mail-in ballot and you drop it in the box, even if you drive it all the way there and drop it in the box. It's still counted as mail-in voting. So you have to go in person, make them print you a new ballot. Vote it right there and then have them shred the old ballot for you and you will be counted as voting in person that day.
I do it every election.
I do too. And I use the one on Union and, um, Research and it's fast. So, thank you for your time this evening, you guys. Have a blessed night. Um, and we'll see you on Election Day.